I have the meeting to order. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 30th of 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the school committee meeting?
So will.
I'll second.
We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordera?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll start. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) in the United States of America. Into the Republic, where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, first item is the Consent Agenda. Everything listed in the Consent Agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed or voted on separately? May I have a motion to approve and accept the items listed in the Consent Agenda, including the minutes for the September 9th, 2025 meeting?
So will.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Dr. Bailey, do we have anyone signed up for delegation?
No, we do not.
Okay. I don't see any old business, so we will move to new business, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Bailey.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I am pleased with the first agenda item to announce that we, I am recommending new Director of Student Services candidate. That we had two school committee members participate in the interview process. We had a very rigorous process. We had two sit-down interviews, we had performance tasks, and then one-to-one interviews with myself. But tonight, I'm happy and pleased to recommend to you Colleen Doyle-Farrow, who is a candidate for the Director of Student Services at our school district. She brings with her a strong background in special education leadership and student support. She most recently served as a Special Education Administrator at Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District, and previously served as Program Director at Pilgrim Area Collaborative. She holds a Law degree from University of Massachusetts School of Law in Dartmouth, a Master of Science in Teaching, and a Postgraduate Certificate in Educational Administration from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. With a deep commitment to inclusive education and student success, Colleen is excited to support the students, families, and staff of Akushnet through a collaborative and student-centered approach. I will be introducing her tonight, but I wanted to give time to the two school committee members who participated in the interviews. We had both Mrs. McGlynn and Mr. Ellis participate, and I really do appreciate your time with that. Just if you want to share any thoughts with the rest of the committee before we move forward.
Sure. Yeah. First and foremost, Colleen, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
It was really great to meet you during the interview process, and I'm very pleased to see you here. Yeah, the interview process went very well. I was involved in the second round of interviews. Ebony took care of the first round of interviews. You know, I was very impressed with Colleen's kind affect and her poise. She really did a great job at answering questions in a very thoughtful and detail-oriented way, that made it very clear that she has the background in, you know, what would lead into being a successful Student Services Director. I don't feel like many of the questions that we asked were answered with vague generalizations. We really got very specific answers, and actually went so far as to, she went so far as to recommend some kind of specific action steps that could be taken in the district that, frankly, even if we didn't end up making an offer to her, we probably would have pursued. That impressed me very much.
I was just going to add that having this specialty of law too added to that adds a whole other level that I really didn't consider at the time initially, and then when hearing it and then putting it together with the role of the People's National Director, it's really going to add a lot to what we have there. And I think that we do welcome you to the team. That's, it's going to be eye-opening for, I think, all involved. So we welcome you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So it was, like I said, a very rigorous process, and not only did two school committee members participate, but we had all stakeholders present at the meeting. We had teachers from both schools, school psychologists, related service, et cetera. So at this time, I'd love to be able to call up Colleen Doyle-Farrow to the podium, just to introduce herself to all of the committee members and see if there's any other further questions before we take a vote to approve the contract that I put forth. So please feel free, Colleen. You should go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members and Superintendent Bailey. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to be here and to begin my journey with the Akushnet Public Schools. Ms. Bailey kind of touched on a couple of things, excitement and student success, and that really is the energy that I'm putting forward tonight. I'm very much interested in getting to know the community, I'm sorry, the community a little bit better through observation and analysis of the existing programs and through building the relationships with staff and families. I think that my entry plan is going to be focused on listening, observing, taking it all in to determine what we can do with the resources that we have to bring best practice to Akushnet, building on what is already wonderful and closing the gaps on things that need to be improved. And so I thank you again for the opportunity and appreciate you considering all the experience that I have and how it might be a great match for your school district. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Colleen?
Any questions? I just would welcome you, and we're glad to have such a qualified, competent person in this role. It's super important to the district, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. And the good news is she starts on Monday. So there'll be some nice overlap between the person who's currently in the role and Colleen, so we're super excited. So at this time, I'd be asking for a vote to approve her contract as set forth in your packet. I will sign it once the vote is taken.
So can I entertain a motion to approve the Director of Student Services contract for Colleen Doyle-Farrow as recommended by the Superintendent and Hiring Committee consisting of two school committee members?
So will.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call.
Yep.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordera?
Yes.
Mr. Alford?
Yes.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Colleen.
Thank you. We're happy to have you. Okay, next on my report is the High School Tuition Agreements Planning Session, and I'll basically turn this over to the chair, as we wanted to have a discussion, as you know, regarding the high school tuition agreements and perhaps map out the planning process and logistics and timeline, et cetera. So I'll turn it over to Ron.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Bailey. So I think we had a meeting, I guess it was at the end of August at this point, and we had the four high schools here, New Bedford, Old Rochester, Fairhaven, to present. And I just want to be clear, the reason we're doing this, right, is that those agreements, I think the New Bedford one was originally for like 20 years, and that's coming through. The Fairhaven one was maybe 10 years or so, and that is also coming, coming through. Those agreements are expiring, right? And so we have to figure out what the path is moving forward. There will be no change in terms of the vocational offerings, right? Our students in Akushnet will still be able to apply to Old Colony and Bristol-Aggie High Schools. Nothing, nothing will change there. So, and I also would say that since the last meeting, you know, Dr. Bailey has done some work, you know, with legal counsel, because there aren't a lot of towns who don't have a high school. It's an uncommon situation. You know, it involves negotiation, and so like that could put one town or another in a detrimental position. So just kind of as a process and how this would work, there needed to be some conversations about how to approach it, because the rules may be a little different than they are in other instances of negotiation, right? So, so to me, I think first and foremost would be talking about, you know, what we think the timeline is in terms of wanting to make a decision, because, you know, we're in October, essentially. I think, I think once we hit January and flip the calendar, frankly, I think people are going to be thinking about wanting to make that decision, and families want to plan, and the kids want to know kind of where they're dealt. And so my personal opinion, and everyone I'd ask you for yours, was that like we should probably target to try to make this decision by just end of December. That's my, that was my initial thought, but certainly wanted to get input from the rest of you guys, if you agree with that timing, or Dr. Bailey, if we think that is a timing that we can drive towards and potentially.
I definitely think that's the goal.
I had some questions just around, you know, realistically, what sort of timelines do we need to be working within? Because, you know, once we select the schools that we're going to be entering negotiations with, there's still presumably going to be a negotiations process. They'll have to put forward proposals. We'll talk about tuitions and transportation and all that other stuff. So although, Dr. Bailey, you know, have you put, do you have an idea of how long do you think that process might take, and when do we have to have it done by? Like, do we have a dead stop and it's the end?
And I might, Dr. Bailey, I might just add something to this. I almost think too, and I think one of the things that we'll talk about here is having a committee that consists of the central administration and business managers, so that actually those negotiations can begin.
Yeah.
Because I think it's one thing to decide, oh, we really love A school, B school, C school, whatever, but the finance is a component of that. And so it kind of needs to happen simultaneously, so that when we come to decision-making, the finance is a part of it.
Yes.
Because if we wait, go through a process to decide what schools, then go through a negotiation process, we're going to run out of time, probably.
And if there's some schools that don't have an opportunity to present the financial portion of their proposal, we may just be potentially missing out on better opportunities for the students as well.
I can't imagine that any of the superintendents will not want to meet right away, because this has a lot of budget implications. We start our budget December, January timeline, and people need to know what the plan is. So I would say the sooner the better. And once we decide tonight, this committee and the logistics, we will immediately begin reaching out to all of the schools to have a sit-down with those superintendents and business managers, and in some cases possibly the school committee chairs, to discuss finances, transportation, tuition amounts, all those things, right? So.
So the committee would be central administration, the FMS guidance counselor, the chair when necessary, and then all things would be filtered back through this, this committee?
Yes.
For decision-making?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I just, this one, this is probably one of the major decisions any school committee can make, with maybe 20 years, period. Not visualizing any delays, but I think we should have the option in the back of our mindset, if we have to ask for a year, you know, with the vendors that we now use, a year's grace in our decision, I think we should have that, that option.
Did Ms. Alford be suggesting to continue on with the current terms to allow more time? Is that, is that what you?
Yes, continue with that with negotiations, you know, and establish, you know, goal for a time, yes.
Sure.
But if we find that we're getting into some more serious discussions, you know, with, with, maybe like appealing to the state, just for example, appealing to the State Department of Education to recognize that maybe this type of arrangement that we have maybe with, with two or three different schools, that, that we could get funded, you know, for transportation?
Sure.
Rather than coming out of, you know, our, you know, our own budget.
Yeah.
So, and those type of, you know, that process sometimes takes a great deal of time. So as long as we have an op, we could have option that we can, you know, we can say to New Bedford, to Fairhaven, we're going to look for a year extension because we haven't finished our deliberations. I mean, we just should have that.
I think it's a great point, and I think, I agree with you if we, so we're in October. We have three months.
That's tough.
It's, it's tough, right? Three months that we're driving to meet the goal.
Right.
If there's anything that starts to pop up where this thing doesn't continue to move at a pace that we feel like it needs to move, I think, to your point, we need to be having that, that conversation. Again, I, I'll speak personally, I have an eighth grader, right? And so she's, and she's type A, and she isn't going to be looking for, she's going to want to make her decision as soon as possible, right? And I'm sure there's many families who feel the same way. And so people are going to, again, I think you have a little bit of grace probably till January, and then once we're in that year, people are going to start to get a little like, what are we doing? So I think we can all commit to drive to that timeline and do our best to meet it. Again, there's a negotiation aspect here that, you know, can obviously get complicated. So I think some of the goals of the committee would be to bring the business managers together to start the negotiation, share ideas, they'll discuss all of the options, you know, they would potentially talk about, and that can be filtered back to this committee, what kind of surveys maybe want to do with, with people to get an understanding of what folks' expectations or goals are in the district. And then I think we have an October school committee meeting, we have a November meeting, and if we, we can certainly plan for regular updates at those meetings, and obviously if things come up, we need to meet more frequently, we can, we can do that as well.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that was brought up during, you know, the initial discussion around this, and then also during the presentations, was potential opportunities for the committee, probably as a group, as opposed to individuals, to potentially visit some of the schools and get tours, get a sense of what the grounds are like, services.
So why don't we, that's on the agenda, why don't we do, so I think the goal may be that we try to identify maybe multiple dates, because I know it'll be hard to get everybody probably on the same date, but if we can put together, Paula, a couple of dates, and then if folks on this committee, and obviously administrative folks want to go too, then maybe we can.
I guess one of the questions that I had around that would be, is that something that we would have to be aware of not having quarrel when we do these visits? We'd have to make sure that there's only two committee members present at any given time? Okay.
And if you tell me that mornings are better or afternoons, I can work with the superintendents from these theater schools to get some times for you. So do you have any, you know, definitely?
I would, this is an on request, but if there was like an off-time meeting, like seriously on a weekend or something, that would be like my ideal scenario.
Okay.
I don't care what time.
Weekend.
Yeah.
To get a tour of the schools? Okay.
Yeah, I can do, I mean, with a little bit of notice, because of the nature of my role, my job.
Yeah.
I can do pretty much anytime, as long as I know at least a week or two in advance, so that I can make arrangements with my appointment book.
Okay.
I could certainly do weekends, evenings, you know, whatever, whatever's needed.
Okay.
Yeah, I could do evening, probably evenings too, but weekend, like just.
Weekend, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Also, she's.
No, actually, I'm not. Things are picking up, so I cannot do during the weekend.
Okay. I mean, keeping in mind that you won't see the school in action, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right? But you, and again, I have no idea. I'll ask, right?
Yeah.
I'll ask the superintendents.
I think it would be nice if, and this is the trick, is like, there is a significant benefit to what you pointed out just now, to seeing the schools in operation with students in the building, moving through the corridors, seeing how they interact with staff, but from our personal scheduling standpoints, that may not be viable.
It may be viable for some of you and some of you not.
And maybe some, yes, and some.
Depends on the day. I could do the, I could do during the week, during the day.
You can do during the.
Yeah, I can do during the day and the week, that's, that's fine.
Okay. What about you, Mr. Alford?
Yes, I'll be able to, I'm feeling much, much better.
Okay. I appreciate that. So let me, obviously, we want to get this scheduled as soon as possible, so let me work on that, and I will get back to you with some scheduling that works.
Mr. Chair, on this point, I don't know if a motion will be needed for the next meeting, but the, we should reassure those students that are going to Fairhaven or New Bedford now, that they will be able to, no matter what agreements we reach, that they will be able to continue to graduate from, from the schools if they choose to do so.
So I recently sent home a letter to families, it went to everybody, and it did reassure them of that point, because, you know, it is stressful if they're in the schools and they're worried about it, and I know the intent of the superintendents and myself is not to take away anything from anyone.
And just for clarity and certainty around that, is that in the language currently?
So currently, it's in the Fairhaven agreement. It was not in the New Bedford agreement, so we came up with an addendum for the New Bedford agreement to mirror that language. So we currently have agreements with both New Bedford and Fairhaven that allows the students currently there to be sort of grandfathered in, if you will, if that should happen.
Because if, because if we did not have that, we would probably be in a position of, of, of making a decision very prematurely.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, out of people's, you know, because, you know, parents and concerns.
Right.
And we would really want to keep it on a level field, you know, and take, and discuss all options.
And I have told families that, you know, they will receive updates along the way, as we know more. But so far, I've only received one phone call, and it was a good phone call. So people are just kind of listening to the committee to see, you know, and listen to the process.
My, my perception from the few questions that I've seen come in, frankly, is that maybe some people didn't understand why, why this is happening, just relative to the fact that the tuition agreements are expiring.
Yes.
It's not that people are trying to tamper with agreements that are currently in place. These are expiring, and we have to do this.
Yes.
And so, and once people understand that, obviously, they get it. But yeah, I mean, I think it's our duty to do our due diligence to try to give the kids in Akushnet the best possible, maybe the most possible, best options that are, that are out there, you know, within the reasonable means.
People realize that this arrangement we have, that we're one of the very few high school, you know, you know, schools and school systems, that parents will, and students can have a free choice, maybe, maybe, you know, of two schools, including the vocational and the third, but also it may be even, even an agreement, we might want to reach it with three, and have a planned, a whole planned curriculum type of process where, where they're matched, the placement is matched with the students' gifts and talents, which they can expand. And of course, we all know students are very varied, and so, so there'd be so many options of free choice, which most school systems do not offer for their, for their students. So we are, we are in a very, that's why we should really focus on the gift that we have in our midst and go forward and use it the best way. And that's why good deliberations would be very, very fruitful.
Absolutely. And I do appreciate the fact that in Akushnet, our students have choice. I think that's one of the nice things about our community, that students have the choice, and they can go to different places. And you're right, different places fit different students, right? I just want to say we're also being very thoughtful about the finances involved here. So we have to do our due diligence with our business managers to make sure that we can fiscally afford and be responsible for the choices.
I know we see, you know, time and time again, every, every year, whenever a new budget cycle comes up, the biggest expenses that Akushnet has are almost invariably out of district tuitions and out of district transportation. They're well outside of our control.
Right.
And they can vary, at least from the transportation standpoint, they can vary year over year, just depending on which kids are going to which schools, and, you know, trying to keep though the financial aspect of these agreements, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say under control, because that's not a very, it's kind of a negative connotation, but just keeping them responsible to the school and the town's needs without overstretching, you know, the school's own budget and having to fund more than we already do, it's just, you know, it's going to be tricky.
I think we want a viable, sustainable approach, right?
Right.
So, yeah, and I agree, transportation, just the increase year over year is typically very extravagant, so. But I do, Ms. Alford, I think you raised a great point, and if you look at the current arrangement, you know, New Bedford offers something very unique, and Fairhaven offers something very, so depending on what the kid wants and what they're looking for, those are two really great options, and they're very different, and they give you different things, which is a great thing, right? So.
Yeah.
So any further?
Just one point, just rubblings I've heard about siblings, like possibly go, like if we get rid of one high school and they have an incoming freshman, they could possibly have two high schools, two different high schools. So I feel like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I think that's a legitimate concern. I think, you know, realistically speaking, it, it could happen, but I know that, you know, when we did the high school presentations, we saw that we already have school choice students enrolled in the schools that we don't currently have agreements with. I can't, you know, we can't speak for Fairhaven and New Bedford, but if for whatever reason we no longer maintain a contract with them, I think it would be very unlikely if they didn't open up school choice, if they're not already enrolled for it, to allow things like the siblings to continue going, to allow some kids to go to those schools that don't, would no longer have that option. You know, time will tell, and ultimately, that's at the discretion of those school committees.
Yeah.
But I think that's pretty likely.
Yeah, I think it's a viable concern. I think, well, we got a question from a parent who had one already there and one potentially wanting to go there, so totally could understand, you know, the concern or stress that that may cost.
Make the morning sorry.
But I think let's, let's keep working, and let's see where we end up here, and obviously, we'll have to deal with challenges along the way.
If I could make a suggestion, I know that we already have a pretty packed meeting docket throughout the balance of the year, but with how important this is, and I think it's really important to get public feedback on it, I think it might be wise to consider doing a public workshop, making sure it's well-publicized, that way, parents can come and make, make their feelings and thoughts known, you know, in a constructive way. Do we think that that's reasonable with the meeting agenda we have?
That's up to the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, more information is better.
Yeah.
See why.
There's no harm done, but, you know.
No harm done, I mean, it's not.
Good public discussion.
Yeah. As long as it's a discussion.
I've been hearing from parents in the barber shop and everywhere else, on the roadside and so forth.
One of the things we were obviously planning is our annual high school night, and one of the things that our staff has talked about is doing a survey after the high schools present. And again, it would be the survey for the eighth grade families, right? But I think what you're talking about is opening it up to everybody, you know, not just the eight, the current eighth grade families, but.
I mean, there are kids that are going to, you know, they're in second grade right now, and they're going to be living with the decisions that were made.
We can certainly look at surveys as well, so that we have multiple ways to get information from our families, which is usually what happens. We, we don't just try to do one way, because some people can't make it to a meeting, but they can certainly fill out a survey or, you know, another way.
Yeah, and I think having an opportunity for, for parents to ask questions and, and have it, you know, recorded and available for viewing after the fact is a good way to make sure that there's not a lot of confusion. I know a lot of stuff gets thrown around on, you know, social media pages, and it can get very confusing, it turns into kind of a big community-sized game of telephone. Stuff just gets twisted or missed, or, you know, intentionally or unintentionally, and having an opportunity to post something that questions can be asked at, they can be answered or followed up on as needed based on the, you know, the question itself, and have sort of like a hard copy that folks can refer back to.
Yeah, I think it needs to be more of like a question and answer type thing, not like, I want this school because of this. Like, it has to be very specific, and I think we can go on.
No, we couldn't answer the questions probably during the meeting unless they were very surface-level ones, but at least having an opportunity to get an official avenue for those folks to ask the questions and get answers is wise.
Or we can put out a survey where they have the opportunity to put questions, and if we don't know the answers, we can certainly figure it out as a team or check with the theater school superintendents. I would just ask that, you know, we, I think the first thing is we need to start meeting with the superintendents and their business managers immediately, before anything, because we don't know anything until we sit down in a room with them and meet and talk about, you know, some future plans.
I think we should consider as well the timing, as you referenced, I know typically around now, we would have a high school night, and schools would come in and present, and I think we should consider, do we want to have that at this moment when we haven't made a decision yet, because that's potentially going to set some type of expectation that the.
It's a hard choice.
Right? So it may be worthwhile to do some type of survey, or have, or have people hear, question, vote, whatever.
Yeah.
And then maybe think about having the high school night once the decision has been made.
When's the high school night scheduled for currently?
Usually the fall, and it's usually planned around now or into October, November, but I did speak to the principal, and she said, you know, after speaking with the council who does this, she can definitely put it off for a bit while. It's usually the fall, and it's usually around now or into October, November, but the, I did speak to the principal, and she said, you know, after speaking with the council who does this, she can definitely put it off for a bit while we are figuring everything out.
Mm-hmm.
So we can certainly do that.
Sure. Would it be unreasonable for us to put it off to like the middle of January? Because if we have to make a decision on the two partner schools by the end of December, that would give at least a couple of weeks for them, you know, if any changes were to happen, you know, or not.
Right.
That those schools would be able to get their ducks in a row and get your permission.
I don't think it's unreasonable, but I want to check with the middle school principal and the council, who's very involved in this transition project.
And I think if, if those other schools, if we end up with two, maybe more, who knows, but whatever, if those other places are a school choice option, for example, to Jesse's point, I think people, people will want to know that.
Yeah.
They're going through a school choice process versus having the ability to just go, right?
Right.
And I want to be careful about us having the night and having people have expectations, and then it turns out something is different than ultimately where we end up. That's all. So it's not to delay, and it's not to postpone people's ability to make a decision, but it's helping them make the decision with all the information that they need to make the decision.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think it would be helpful to have this survey go out prior to that night, where the, so then some of those questions can be answered, because I know with the open house night when we have the people here, not everyone gets to talk to the person individually.
Sure.
So if they go ahead of time, some of the questions that the parents have, they could have that right in their PowerPoint, that's up there too.
Yeah.
I think when we send out the survey, maybe it would be wise to include like an open-ended question section at the end, where if there's any specific questions that parents have, they can essentially pre-submit some of those to us. That way, we can pick out the ones that are the most common or the most important in our eyes and answer those during either a meeting or during a workshop if we end up hosting one.
Definitely.
Gives us a chance to prepare and have thorough thoughtful answers to those.
And Dr. Bailey, just, just for full clarity, there's nothing in any language or legally that would say that we could only have two. It really comes down to whether it could be financially viable and those kinds of.
Yeah, so legally, we have to have one.
Yeah.
That's what we have to have legally.
Sure.
But there's nothing that says we can't have more than one, which we currently have two.
Sure. Yeah. I think just from my, I, I've actually put a lot of thought into this, and I'm not a school business manager, although I'll refer to you at a later date, but in my eyes, like, you know, theoretically, there's nothing stopping us from having three or four, but I think it makes it difficult for those districts to justify opening up enrollment, because now we have to figure out transportation to three or four, or in this case, so the colonies included, five different locations. There's, from their perspective, probably too much variability year to year, it makes it very difficult to predict how many students are going to come. Right now, we've got two schools, I can't speak for the enrollment at those two schools, but my guess is that they're probably definitely stable year over year. I don't expect that there's big shifts where one graduating class, 75% of the kids go to New Bedford instead of Fairhaven. So having too many options, I think, could pose challenging, both from a transportation costs and even those schools' interest in bringing in, you know, contracting with us if they can only guarantee they're going to get maybe, you know, five or 10 students on a given year. It's tough.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
I've been, you know, I was going through my memory bank, I remember when I joined state service back in the eighties, one thing we, we had to go through was a vigorous training program for managers and potential managers, and we used to have to have exercises and performance-based type of contracts, contracting, you know, and so therefore, you know, one of those, we set the, you know, set goals, and then your assets and your liabilities, and you put it all together in a plan. And I'm just wondering if that format would ever apply, because this is going to be your nightmare, but you know, as far, you know, incoming, which assists us in coming into, you know, to a, to a decision, or you will have to make the recommendation.
So we did.
Recommendation.
Yeah, we did send out.
We've got zero, we have all sorts of information out there.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, and, and, but, but as Mr. Ellis says, it's the, you know, there's a variable, and one is too, too many, and that, you know, affects stability in the future. There, there may be other items that we, you know, we haven't talked about yet that that could, that could be, you know, create some future problems. So, so that's where this exercise.
That's why this is a very important decision for the committee, actually.
Yeah.
But we, we did have a criteria that we outlined, we sent it to the schools, we will be looking at those things thoroughly with you.
Mm-hmm.
But you're right, this is an absolute big decision for all of you.
Do you think that the admin team could put together after some, you know, after you've had some initial discussions with the other superintendents, basically a fixed timeline of when we need to have certain decisions made, what the next steps are, when we're going to do some school tours? You know, there's a lot that goes into that, I'm not expecting it to materialize in a week, but, you know, at least something that we can refer back to and use as our guidepost as we move forward, that way we don't lose sight of any important dates.
So I think we're asking for a project plan, right?
Project plan, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Just in case.
Anybody in the school have project manager credentials?
And we've set up in the draft, in the drives, we started putting all the documents in there, so we'll continue doing the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As we start this work or continue this work.
Any other, all right, well, so I appreciate that, that was a good, important discussion. Next item, school operating procedure, school committee operating procedures, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on this right now, but I think we had a workshop back in beginning of September, right, as the, this committee has been formed with two new members to talk about how we work together and how we operate. And so coming out of that, Dr. Bailey took the initial pass at putting together a draft, and so I think the ask would be for all of us to look at that between now and the next school committee meeting, provide any feedback you may have to, to Dr. Bailey, and then we can potentially vote on the operating procedures at the next school committee meeting. It's really meant to just kind of guide us in terms of how we work with each other and work with the administration.
Any questions on that?
No, I, I gotta say, I really do appreciate the, in particular, the problem-solving checklist draft, I think that's going to be really helpful for students, or for parents, rather.
Mm-hmm.
I know as a parent, sometimes if you have a problem, your child's having trouble in some aspect of school or transportation, sometimes it can be tough to figure out who to talk to, so you just go to the admin, or you go to the principal, or you go to the school committee.
Yeah.
And, you know, realistically, you might be able to get things done even faster if you go through given channels. Yeah.
That's right. And it's in the handbooks, that sheet that I gave you was in the handbooks to guide parents and families to, you know, follow that protocol when there is a concern. You know, sometimes I'll get a phone call, and the first question I ask is, did you call the principal?
Mm-hmm.
You know, did you speak to the teacher, that type of thing? So, but yes, look them over, if you have any edit suggestions, we can certainly talk about it at the next meeting, but the goal will be to just put it to a vote in two weeks at our next meeting. And that is all I have for tonight.